Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get underway, I have a few administrative announcements. Welcome to the September meeting of the Aronikoid zoning board of appeals. Time flies when you're having fun. The fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly direction. Use either the north or the south stairs to exit the building, not the elevators. Our meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, not as a verbatim transcript. In order to help her keep things straight, when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium, if you come more than once, and speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. The way that we work it here is as follows. We call the after the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, then raise their right hands to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the case, the members of the board will have an opportunity to question or engage in discussion with the applicant. And once that process has been concluded, then the case will be open to the public for input. We have three categories of public input that we've identified over the years that I've been on the board. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. And then we open the floor to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then we open the floor to those who aren't sure whether they're in favor or opposed to the application, but want to talk to us about something that has something to do with the application. After we conclude all of the public input portion, then we give the applicant or their representative the opportunity to return to the podium and address anything that came up during the public input portion of the meeting. During the public input portion, the comments are to be directed to the board and not to the applicant. Once the process has been concluded, we'll end the case for that case and move on to the next case until we get to the last case. Once we get to the last case and conclude that, the board will take a short break. And then, once we return, we will deliberate and make decisions on the cases that have been presented to us in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant or their representative are still present. So if the first applicant has left and the second applicant is still in the room, we would take the second case first. And we will take the cases in order that the applicants are still present. And then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and take them in the order of those who have left. You're not required to stay for the deliberation portion. If you do, however, it's important to note that unless requested by the board, that's not an opportunity for engaging in any further conversation with the board or the applicant. At once, if you do leave, you're certainly welcome to call tomorrow morning and they'll be glad to tell you what decisions we reached. Or if you get home in time, I think it's 13:01 now that we're on. We were brought 13:03, beaming live into your living room or other place where your TV is hooked up to the cable. So, having said that, oh, tonight, we welcome Charlesy. I'm sorry, you.
Pickett.
Pickett. She is the alternate member. Mr. Upson couldn't be with us tonight, and she will be here next month because I will not be here next month. So, welcome to the board.
Thanks for having me over.
Our pleasure. I think that concludes all the preliminary stuff and we could start doing business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1909-1. Upon the matter of request by Joseph Palladino for area variances to construct a new single-family two-story dwelling with less than required rear setback and exceeding maximum permitted lot coverage and height on premises 489 Rock Beach Road in an R2 residential district.
Good evening. Joseph Palladino, 3 Delta Terrace.
April Palladino, 3 Delta Terrace.
Do you raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as previously stated, we are looking to construct a new single-family residence at 49 Rock Beach Road with exceptions to the rear setback, the maximum permitted lot coverage, and the permitted height. We are lifelong Aronikoid residents, or actually, I'm a lifelong Aronikoid resident. I'm a fourth-generation resident. My family intends to live in this home, stay in Aronikoid, raise our family here. As I noted in my submission, the requests that we're making do not conflict with the character of the neighborhood and they are consistent with the existing nature of the surrounding residences and they will not result in a hardship to the neighboring properties. And we also considered whether the request was substantial and the amount of variances requested, as outlined in more detail in my submission, are minimal and they are likely to not result in any hardship to the neighbors. I'm open for any questions. I'm sure you guys have read my submission and I am open for any questions by the board.
We'll have some. Don't worry.
Sure, I'm sure you will.
You look like you were gonna go first, so.
Go ahead.
All right. As I understand it, the rear setback that you're looking for is to basically accommodate that little bump out
Yes.
at the back. And that the front setback that you considered, you're not asking for. You've gone back to the what's.
Yes, it was just an alternative and we decided to go with the rear setback because it, like you said, it's only the bump out and it also would allow us to have a longer driveway in the future, which I think is important, obviously.
And in terms of the lot coverage, if you were to stay within the lot coverage requirements, you'd have a large dollhouse is basically it, right?
Yes, if we stay within the coverage, we'd essentially really not, the house wouldn't be large enough to accommodate the needs and our need to build a new home presently. It really wouldn't be much of a difference in the house we live in and it really would defeat the purpose as far as the needs of our growing family, essentially.
And the height is to accommodate the height variances for?
Well, the issue with the height is we have searched considerably to find both a lot in Aronikoid. And as you know, there's not a lot of empty areas within the town. And ultimately, we did find a lot. And we have, we searched for a long time trying to find a plan which would both accommodate the size we need as well as the challenges of building on a small lot. And a lot of the homes and the architects I've spoken with are essentially, as you can see on a plan, very narrow plans. And the height is needed to create space in the home and.
Or at least the illusion of space.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And that's, that's where we're, that's why we're having the height issue. And it's just basically the challenges, the lot does pose a lot of challenges. But I think we, in searching, we're able to find something that does meet our needs and hopefully not affect the surrounding neighbors.
I was just gonna make a comment that the overall plan that we have in front of us, it's a matter of the pitch on the roof being aesthetically pleasing to the eye. And in my opinion, you know, the way most of the modern houses are built, they're built with a tall pitch. In our area, that helps with the snow runoff and rain runoff. But it also, it seems like most builders nowadays are utilizing the tall pitch for aesthetics also. So I think it's a very handsome-looking layout and very eye appealing. It's just personal. And I don't believe, you know, again, my opinion, the overall height variance is substantial. You're looking for an extra four feet and that would be basically toward the peak, which is not the whole roof, it's just the center section of the roof. So I don't think it's considered substantial.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll open it to public input.
Thank you.
First category, as I said, is those, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application, step right up to the microphone. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application, this is your time to step up to the microphone. Anyone who'd like to talk to us about height, lock requirements, whatever, you're welcome to step up to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1909-2. Upon the matter of request by Premier Sign Systems, acting as agent for United Refining Quick Fill for area variances to install placement signage in new location on premises 1862 Hudson Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Laura Baranas from Premier Sign, representing United Refining.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, we recently went in and got a permit for wrapping the gas canopy. As you see on there, we're doing it all over. They're trying to clean up all the gas stations and make them look nice. We just recently did the one up on Ridge Road East.
It looks nice.
And, thank you. We wanted to put a pole sign in with the gas pricers in it, the electronic gas pricers. But we just felt really with that lot, the way it is, it really wasn't a good spot for it. So we decided to get rid of that horrible pole sign up on top of the gas canopy. That's going. And so they asked if we could actually put a gas pricer on each end of the gas canopy that would just show the, their price for the gas for the unleaded so it can be electronically changed. They don't flash, they don't change. Only time they change actually is when the gas price changes. That's what they're looking for, one on each side, so.
Given current conditions, I like the 246 that you've put on the sign. As long as you keep it there, that would work really well.
Yeah, I do too.
Although it says 253 on the first row.
Well, I did want to also let you know that the manager went down at least three to four houses on each side and asked the neighbors, showed the neighbors, if there was anybody that had an issue with it. Nobody had an issue with it, everybody was fine. He even went across the street, which is a business over there.
Dental office.
Yes, and asked them and they were fine with it. The only thing that they questioned was the time of the gas delivery. So corporate said that they would work that out with them. The one guy had said he preferred delivered a little earlier in the day than when it was being delivered. So they said that's not a problem, they would take care of that. Everybody else was fine with it. And then I did go around, not around, but I went on to Google and there are quite a few of the gas pricers at the stations, but they're all on pole signs that I see, that I could find.
I noticed the one on Ridge Road West has already been done. And it's got the new sign, the way you want it, the new canopy and the new.
Oh, the one out in Greece?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, that was like one of the first ones I ever did. That's a really nice station.
That looks good.
Yeah, the towns, honestly, the towns have been really happy with the wraps that we've been putting on them. They just said it cleans up the black, it makes it look really nice, and it does, you know, it's appealing.
It's a, it's a modern look to it.
It is, yeah. Compared to what's there right now, just, most of them, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We'll open it up to the public input. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about signage, wraparound, gas prices, delivery times, anything like that? Seeing, hmm? Gas prices? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1909-3. Upon the matter of request by Seafood Harbor LLC for area variances to install a second freestanding sign exceeding maximum number of freestanding signs in square footage on premises 850 East Ridge Road in a sea business district.
Fenzan Sea Harbor LLC. So we tried to, we do have.
Hold on, did you put your name and address on the record yet?
My name?
Yes, your name and address.
Oh, the address, I'm sorry.
Yes.
850 East Ridge Road. So his name too.
Raise your right hands, do you, well, both of you.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
We tried to put a, we do have a pole sign right now for the Seafood Harbor, but we tried to put another sign, like, we actually do attach to the building, but it looks like a standalone. We have, the reason we want to put this in is just, it looks more like the whole piece of the artwork instead of just a sign. We tried to create a, it's like, look like a pier. You guys, if you do have the pictures. So it will shows like this, like a small fishing village with all the drawing with the building. So now, we think it's, it does have the Seafood Harbor restaurant and bar in there, but it's more like a, like a art piece than a sign itself. And if the restaurant and bar, it do bothers, we can remove the restaurant and bar, just have the Seafood Harbor in there, if that's the case.
I have one question. There's a sign currently on the peak of the building from the old restaurant.
Oh, we removed that. We no longer use that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Is the sign gonna be lit?
The sign itself is not lit. We might put a lighting next to it to.
To light against it?
Yeah, points at the sign. We actually have the artist to draw this whole sign to put on. So we haven't have things done. So if the restaurant and bar, you don't guys don't like this, we can remove that. Just put a Seafood Harbor on there.
Isn't the name of the, isn't Seafood Harbor Restaurant and Bar the name of?
Yeah, that's the name of the restaurant, yes.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think any of us have any problem with you putting the name of your business on. Restaurants and bars, people look for those, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I do. What would be your signature dish?
Listen to the radio ad. All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about signs or seafood? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we remove case number ZB 1908-5 from the table.
A second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is fully constituted tonight.
This is an item for board action. It was a tabled item, case number ZB 1908-5. Upon the matter of request by Casey Rodriguez for an area variance to continue parking a non-conforming commercial vehicle on premises 99 Summershire Drive in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, board. Casey Rodriguez, 99 Summershire.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think when we were last here in August, you were going to look into seeing if there was any other arrangement that could be made for storage of the food truck, right?
That is correct. So I'm gonna start with a couple that you guys had mentioned to me, just some off the top that you guys had talked about. Cube Smart was one that was brought up. So Cube Smart called them, discussed, because they have an overhang for vehicles. I need to add here that I'm a, my own commissary. So this kind of makes my situation a bit different. So within the truck, you are your own commissary when you have a three-bay sink and you have refrigeration to hold your perishable food, to keep it safe for consumption. With that being said, I call, let them know, hey, do you have a space? They allow no, like, non-perishables, like, you can't have anything like that on premises. So then I'm onto U-Haul. So U-Haul has the same rule as does almost every storage unit under the known to man. They don't allow you to have anything perishable on premises, they won't be responsible for it. So if we take those off the table, then I just look for something where I need to be able to plug in. So when I say plug in, my truck is electrocuted, outfitted for a certain amount of amps to keep everything running and cold. And so when I pull into my driveway behind my fence and close my doors, I plug into my garage and that keeps everything cold. You have to stay at 45 degrees Fahrenheit or below to keep your food safe for consumption. So I then, looking for someone to allow me to park, almost like you would at a KOA or something of that nature, that is almost impossible. So then I'm onto the next adventure of looking for a commissary. Even though I am my own commissary, I'm now looking for someone almost like a standalone restaurant that would allow me to pull in and park and either bring my stuff into their establishment and put it in their refrigerators or so on and so forth. That is also, that's, people turn their heads when you say that to a business owner. They're like, now, why would we let you come into our place and bring something in and you go to switching something over from your truck to our food establishment? The cross-contamination comes into play as well as being an issue of, the word I'm looking for is missing me. But anyways, so that was out of the question. So then I go on to looking for a place that I can rent myself. So I start at the Tim Hortons, right off Hudson, that's beside the place where you get your oil changed.
Jiffy Lou.
Yes, so there's a Tim Hortons there.
No, I guess it's Valvoline, it used to be Jiffy Lou.
Yes, and so try that. That's about $55, $53 to $5,500 a month. That is astronomical, like, I cannot afford that. So then I'm onto the Steakhouse in behind the Popeyes Chicken Place. And that place was at like $9,300 a month. So then I'm on to look for a small cafe, maybe somewhere that would be open, almost like something like the Bagels, etc., within the Wegmans Plaza. That is also very difficult to find. So I come up with nothing. So then I'm on to speak to my board of advisors at SCORE and I'm like, what do I do? I have no idea what's next. So I come to you now and I can pass these around to each of you if you'd like. It's a packet full of just a bunch of information. Would you guys like to have them?
Sure, we'll make it a part of the record.
This should kind of explain the highlights of information that I'm speaking about as well as giving you the next information that I will cover. So I did explain the fact that I am my own commissary. I also explained the fact that I did go through the steps of trying to find another place. And I would like to say that now I'm hopefully making it very clear that I feel as though I'm at a place of undue hardship, which is defined as an action requiring significant difficulty or expense. Because you guys also had mentioned, could you expand your garage? To expand a garage is thousands and thousands of dollars. And I don't have that. And if I did, I would put it into my truck rather than my garage. So when I say that the action requiring significant difficulty or expense, the difficulties come when we talk about safety and the safety of food consumption. So to keep my food safe, to where there is no cross-contamination, there's no breakdown in communication or someone else is touching or has contact with the food, I need to have all of the things such as, you'll see at the very top of my paper, it talks about our fire system. So with a fire suppression system, it cannot become below 32 degrees Fahrenheit. And if it does, then the whole system is shot. That can be anywhere from $400 to $600 to re-trigger that system every time this happens. So I have to be able to plug my truck in to keep my food cold. I have to be able to have a heater in there to keep my fire suppression safe. And that is a way to keep my food and my truck completely running and safe. So we talk about water supply outside of the fire suppression system. I get my potable water from my house. It comes from the garden hose that goes in through the system and it's heated with the truck, with a water heater that is on the truck. So water is a problem, the fire is a prob, the fire safety system is a problem. And then protection for safe food consumption is an issue. So I'm trying to present to you guys that this is going to shut my doors and I want to serve safe food to the community. I'm here because I wanted to be an important part of the community and if I cannot park it in my driveway and plug it in and keep the food safe, my doors will shut before I'm even able to open it.
Now, my recollection of your presentation last month was that you indicated that the food truck basically is operational between like April and November?
Yes, that is correct. So then I thought, like I had presented to you guys, that I could be like a seasonal, kind of like the boats and the RVs. So I take it over to Four Horse Customs. I'm not sure if any of you know what that is, but Four Horse Customs is a place here that redo, redoes food trucks inside-out, builds them.
I think I read about them in the newspaper about a year ago.
Okay, so those gentlemen, three of them, two of those guys are veterans. I myself am a veteran, I'm sure you guys remember that. And so they are giving me all the information and they said, you do realize if you put this truck somewhere, you're gonna have to shut this entire fire suppression system down and pull your bottle. You will not be able to do anything that you're trying to do throughout the winter, which is serve at all, even if you wanted to serve. Because I wanted to do a meal prep situation where the, if you have any gym heads in here, someone who does meal prep, you can pick up on Sunday and you get five sets of meals or whatever you so choose and that's it. I won't be able to do that because my truck is no longer operational because I don't have a fire suppression system. Because the bottle, everything is taken out at that point because it can't get below that 32 degrees. And as you know, it gets mighty cold here. So I'm at this point where I'm just, I really have nothing else. And the water, the pipes in the place, they can't freeze, they can't bust, then I don't have clean potable water to clean my dishes, to wash my hands, to clean my vegetables and so on and so forth. And so I'm really kind of at a place of, my business mentors were like, are you prepared to pivot? No, I'm not. This is very detrimental to my business. This is not as simple as like, I have tools in my truck and it can't sit in my driveway. This is everything. So I don't know how else or what else. And also, within the packets are each section, each code, each everything that I have to have and follow to be properly outfitted to serve the community.
And the regulations that you've attached are from the Health Department of New York State?
Yes, that is correct. For, well, that's Monroe County.
Monroe County?
Yes, that's Monroe County. I don't know if it goes as far as New York State. I specifically got those off of Monroe County Public Health and Safety.gov, I think that's right.
From the website at the bottom, it looks like it's probably promulgated by the State Health Department because it doesn't say anything about Monroe County in the website address.
Got it. But it is, what we have to, when they give us.
It's your requirements.
Yes, that is the requirements I must follow. So that is where I'm at now, is just trying to figure out what is next. And if you would like to, you can refer back to the original request that I put in and you can just double-check and look at those photos again. And you can see that my truck sits very far back, behind a fence, away. away from the public eye. I guarantee you, if you go down Summershire, you would not know my truck is there unless you stopped, turned your head, and looked back towards my property. And now my neighbors are like, what's going on? Why don't you have? And I'm like, I'm not sure yet. We're working on it. So I'm here to try and figure out what to do next. And I hope that's keep my truck in my driveway.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
Sure.
Hi, I'm wondering if you have spoken to other, uh, food truck businesses locally and asked them where they are storing their trucks?
Absolutely. So for one of those, I spoke to an employee at, uh, Laye Poutine Poutine. And so they collectively use the commissary together. So one person owns it. They all use the commissary, and at this point, they're at capacity. And even at that, they don't plug in. They stop, they pull all their stuff out, they put it in a cooler, and that's how it goes. So another one is Waffles are Wild. She is out of Henrietta, if I'm not mistaken, and she parks in her driveway. I think the rules are different there.
They are.
Um, also, there is a Caribbean truck downtown, uh, right beside the Peppa Pot. He parks in a parking lot adjacent to his, um, restaurant, and he takes everything into his restaurant. Most of the people that are in this position, Rob's Kabobs, um, they have a standalone restaurant, um, effortlessly healthy. They have a restaurant as well. They pull up too. They take everything out. But there are a handful of us who are not like that, that are our own commissary. And we park on premises, which is our homes in most cases. I just was unaware that Aronda, when I moved here, that Aronda Quay was specifically zoned the way it is. And so now I'm trying to figure out how to manage moving forward. But yes, I have spoken to some people. It's come up, they kinda gave me a little bit of guidance, but they're like, good luck. So I have spoken to them, but it kinda gave me a brick wall as well.
Even though you belong to the wrong service, I wanna commend you for, uh, um, uh, for the work that you did in the research and, uh, and I think my, um, um, my original opinion that this is not not gonna be a hardship and that I think she should be allowed to, um, keep it at her home where it is and, uh, still stands.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public input portion. Is there anyone here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. The public input was closed last month. It was not advertised as a public hearing.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Then we're concluded with your case.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And on that note, we will take a break until, uh, quarter up. Minimal differences. Um, so being said all that, I think we should approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member absent, but we are fully constituted. Alright, the next item will be the application pertaining to eighteen sixty-two Hudson Avenue. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I make I make a motion.
Oh, go ahead. Alright, I'll make a motion, eighteen sixty-two Hudson Avenue. Um, that we approve the signage, the ga- the, um, um, knowing that they're taking down the one pole sign, the single pole sign, and they're adding the signage to the canopy and redesign, re, um, redressing the canopy for a better word, uh, lack of a better word. Um, I think it's more modern. I think it looks good. I don't think the sign is, uh, uh, gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood. It is not gonna make any differences as far as environmental, uh, concerns are. Um, I don't believe it's a substantial difference. Um, that being said, I think we should approve it.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention or no abstentions and one member absent, but we are fully constituted. My apologies to the applicants for eight fifty East Road, Ridge Road and Summershire because these are in the, I didn't rearrange the order of the, well, for lack of a better term, would be our verdict sheets. I rearranged the applications. So I apologize for taking the one who'd left ahead of you. Now we're on eight fifty East Ridge Road. This is also a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application as stated. It is gonna be a substantially large sign, but I think what they're trying to create is that environment, like if they're walking on a pier and going into a seafood store. It's, I don't think it's gonna change, you know, the neighborhood that much. If you go around Ridge Road on there, there's a lot of signs on buildings, all different sizes and shapes. Um, alternatives, not, not requiring a variance, is basically not have a sign of that size. I don't think it's a substantial request, and I don't think it's gonna have an effect of physical and environmental conditions of granted. Is it self-created? Yeah, cause they're trying to create, uh, an environment for the restaurant.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I just wanna add that the fact that they've taken down the other sign, uh, that's on the building.
On the building, yeah.
And that I think it doesn't hurt it at all. It helps the situation.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member is absent, but we are still fully constituted. Last item on the agenda is, uh, the application pertaining to ninety-nine Summershire Drive. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. I'll make a motion that we grant the variance as requested. Um, based on the following findings. This will not adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, as is evidenced by the fact that the truck, uh, when it's parked behind the, uh, gate in the back, back of the driveway is barely visible. And submitted with the original application was, um, a statement that was signed by every single uh, neighbor on both sides and across the street, as I recall, indicating that they were in support of, um, the applicant's request, um, Ms. Rodriguez, to be a The applicant's request, uh, Ms. Rodriguez to be allowed to park her truck there. The alternative is that do not require a variance, um, as the applicant testified tonight. Would, uh, require her to close her business and pursue, uh, something else, and I, I think that that. Fact in and of itself constitutes a hardship, uh, which is the standard for an area variance. It is substantial in, in the sense that we have not, uh, generally allowed those kinds of vehicles to be parked in. Driveways around properties, but the vehicles that we have denied access to, uh, in the past were generally owned by. Uh, third parties. And did not have any, um, need to be parked, uh, close to, um, electric and water. As this applicant has testified is, is necessary for her to be able to, uh, run her business. And the other, um. Uh, the applications that we've denied in the past have generally been, uh, because it was more for the convenience of the employer. Than it was for the, uh, applicant and, and on that basis, we had felt that, uh. The town's interest, uh, is supersedes the employer's convenience. Uh, but in this case, uh, the employer is the applicant. And the request is, is a necessity for the applicant to be able to continue. To meet the requirements and she made a diligent, uh, search of other alternatives and there are no alternatives. Uh, that, um, would not require a variance. Uh, it will not have any adverse physical or environmental conditions if it's granted. It's a self-created situation, uh, necessitated by the nature of the applicant's business, the nature of the requirements that. Other governmental entities have imposed upon her for being able to continue to operate her business. In that manner, and, uh, as such, that the fact that it's self-created does not preclude. And should not preclude the granting of this application. Uh, I would however impose, uh, one condition, and that would be that the truck is going to be parked. Behind the gate and the gate will be closed, uh, when the truck is parked on the premises. Um, that was one of the factors that the applicant indicated was her custom, so it shouldn't create any problem. And I think that having driven by, if I wasn't looking for it, I don't think we would have seen it, so. Um. That's my motion.
Can we discuss that for a second?
Sure, absolutely, it's open to discuss, well, first we need a second.
Second.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not. Fan of having the truck there, um, but I do notice that the truck is tucked quite nicely behind the, uh, back of the house. Um. If I were to say yes, or, or to make the blow a little lighter, she does have a nice gate. Um, she does have a six-foot fence around the whole backyard. Um, but if she were to make the gate six foot to, uh, hide the truck a little more. Um. Would that be a problem?
Six, isn't the gate six feet now?
No, I think the gate is, uh, like a four-foot gate. And, and then the, the fence, the side fence is six foot. Based on the pictures.
So the fence that, um, contains my property is about a six-foot fence. The fence that you would pull into is about. About to my chest, so it's probably about four feet. Um. Personally, I think for safety, my kids are back there playing in the yard, I like being able to see if I take my trash out. I personally do not want to put a six-foot gate there, that's more money that could go towards. My business, my truck, like as I said before with expenses and putting. Go, go ahead.
Would you be willing to put like a lattice top? Add it to the, what's there and that you'd be able to still see through? When your kids are playing, but it would kind of cover things up as Mr. LaPerry's pointing out more from the road?
I, I don't mind looking into it at all, um, would that be something that I would need to come back to you guys and talk about? I, I have no idea what that would take to contact the guy who built the fence and say, hey, can you extend this? Can we figure out something else? I'm not really sure, and I don't really know if what the regulations are. If you have something that fans open, is there a point where that you have to be able to see? I'm not sure, I would have to ask.
As I recall, the pictures that you submitted with the application and what I saw when I went by. The gate at the back of the driveway is located at the rear foundation line of the house, so. Under our, uh, ordinance, six feet, uh, would be permissible there.
Okay, I don't mind looking into it at all.
The lattice kind of thing, yes, as Mr. LaPerry points out, you're really, you're going to see maybe the top. Foot or so of the truck.
So a two-foot, two-foot extension is what you're requesting?
Yeah, and you can make it, you know, something that you can still see through. Um, to keep an eye on your kids in the back when you're taking out trash and that kind of stuff, but.
Got it.
That would, I think, cover it up just a little.
Would hide it better.
Cover up, hide it better, make it less noticeable. Is that alright?
I guess it has to be.
I think it's relatively, you'll find, I think, that it should be a relatively minor thing, a few pieces of wood.
Alternatives, I tell you that.
And they, you can get the four-foot by eight-foot lattice panels that.
We can figure it out.
Lowes, yeah, alright. So, uh, we'll put with the gate closed and we'll put gate to be extended, uh, to six feet. In height. Is that okay, Tim?
I'm, I'm not wild about imposing, uh, the extension of the, of the gate, um, as part of the, the variance. Um, or as a condition of the variance, I think with, with the lack of complaints or, um, you know, and the, and the overwhelming support from neighbors. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think that we need to impose that on her.
How about a recommendation as opposed to a condition?
Sounds great.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I, I'd probably be forthright, I, I don't think I'll vote for it, but. Just because of the fact it's a commercial truck and.
Understood, I think, a- and.
I understand her dilemma and I understand the, the, uh. The problems or whatever, but it's, now it's, you know. I'm just worried it opens up Pandora's Box for anybody that wants to have a commercial truck. And I know each one comes on its own merit, um, but, um.
I've been spending the last month having that debate myself about what's different about it. And the additional facts that she brought out tonight, I think clearly distinguish that truck. From others that we haven't approved and.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
Future, um. This will not create any real precedent unless someone comes in with another truck that they can hide the same way.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, uh, from the last meeting, we can. Impose the specifics of the type of truck and again where it's, that, that the gate will be closed, it'll be back there, and this is specifically a food truck of specific dimensions. So that in the future, if that house is resold, the, the likelihood of somebody else using a, whatever, you know, uh.
Yes.
A construction vehicle, that's, that's out of the question.
We've approved the vehicle that requires, uh, electric and potable water sources twelve months out of the year. And requires that food and other perishables be, um, maintained in a, uh. Appropriate manner under the health code, so it's limited to that kind of a circumstance because that's what the application was that we've, we've approved. We have not approved any old. Any and all kinds of trucks. Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And any abstentions? Motion carries, uh, six votes in favor, one opposed. No abstentions. And one member is absent and, but the board is still fully constituted. And then there are two more things before we adjourn. The, with the packets, everyone should have received. Copies of the, uh, minutes that were prepared for the meeting on August fifth. Did everyone receive those and have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Alright, um.
One, one small correction to the minutes?
Yes.
Uh, under the attendance, um, we have the late Russ Thomas listed instead of myself.
Yes. He was here in spirit though.
If it was it.
As he is tonight.
And the date.
Yes.
Date.
The date at the top of the minutes, we, we noticed is August fifth, twenty eighteen.
Oh, you know, I hadn't even noticed that? Alright, so a second, small change, with those, uh.
You're testing us.
Yes, really, with those corrections, uh. I would make a motion that we, uh, adopt the minutes as proposed with those two minor corrections.
Second.
That's alright. Mr. Travis seconds, all those in favor say aye, well, is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Pickett abstains, because she was not present last month.
I mean, not in this beautiful chair.
Right, yeah, I know you were here, but you weren't part of the meeting, so you're technically not allowed to vote on the minutes. With that being said, um. There's one other item. I was informed at the beginning of the meeting and confirmed on the break. That, uh, Mr. LaPerry is going to be.
Retiring.
Retiring from the, from our board. And, uh, it's been a pleasure serving with you and, and we appreciate all the years of service that you've given to town. And we wish you nothing but the best, sir.
Well, it's been a pleasure serving with the, all the board members, the ones that are here currently and the ones that were here. Um, and I wish you all the best to the newbies and, uh, um. And I'm sure I'll see you in the neighborhood because I'm not going anywhere, I'm still living in town.
Alright, good.
But thank you.
Alright, and that means if, uh. You would let the supervisor and the board know that we need to have. Another member appointed to the board and we're going to need another. Alternate member appointed. So. Or at least, we may need another alternate depending upon what the town board does. So, but those two things need to be addressed. And with that, we are adjourned.